...meeting of the Willits City Council order for February 11th. Could we all rise and could the scouts lead us in the pledge?
..........................................
I think no one wanted to go first.
What call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Strankey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mathew?
Here.
Hornstein?
Here.
Mayor Burton?
Here.
Public Communications, first item of business on our, as always, public communications. Does anybody wish to address the council on issues that are not on the posted agenda this evening? No action will be taken. Come up in front and introduce yourself, sign in if you would, Ken or please.
I will. I think I can do it. I have signed in as Jed Diamond. And, as you know, I do a number of things in the community. I'm founder of the Community Healthy Action Team that does the walks. And in my professional life, I'm a writer, among other things. And some of you know I've written a recent book that was going to have a signing at the library on Friday, but it got rained out. So I wanted to just come and to gift each of the council members a copy of the book. It's called Composting Abbey: A Whale of a Story. And it's, you know, every writer kind of looks for good stories. And a number of years ago, when I heard that a whale had washed ashore on the coast, near the botanical gardens, and nobody knew what to do with it, and it turned out somebody knew what to do with it, and the whale was composted. And what I didn't know is that the compost was delivered to schools and organizations all over the area to grow flowers and plants and good things. And so it's a really, I think, important story locally. It's also an important story about the intent we all have to take better care of our resources and recycle. So I would pass you each a gift of Composting Abbey.
Did I sign it?
I did sign it. Ann McGlenty did the wonderful illustrations, and I think they're in order. So if you take one and pass it down, they should be to the right people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jed, I think this is the, one of the only blue whale, intact blue whale skeletons. Is that right?
Yeah, I think there are six in the whole country. And we in our county now have one on the coast. There, I've actually seen the bones of the whale that was buried. And now it's been built up and reassembled, and they're getting ready to hopefully raise money to build a facility that would be available to all the schoolkids and the whole community of a very rare find, a complete blue whale skeleton. A blue whale is the largest animal that's ever lived on the face of the planet. So it's a very big animal, and unfortunate that it got hit and killed. But, you know, the benefit was we now have gardens growing all over our town from the compost, and hopefully a skeleton that'll be of benefit to all the community, being able to learn and get more information about animals and the ecology of the planet.
Thanks, Jed.
Thank you.
Anybody else comments under Public Communications? Second, third, and last call? The next item is under Public Matters, Introduction of Boy Scout Troop 212. I was in Troop 42. Is there still Troop 42 in Willits?
There is.
Okay. Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge Project. Alan, you got a lead on this?
Yes, thank you. My name's Alan Filary, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce Scout Troop 212 here from Willits. I've been working on this merit badge called Citizenship in the Community. And I'd like to introduce the members, the members that are here. We have our leaders that are giving the Scout Troop guidance, Ken and Dolores Peterson.
We know them.
Cody's here in the end. Down here, if you just raise your hand, Aiden Bryant. We have Orin Silverstein and Nick Habel. They are the scouts that are working on this merit badge. And to get this merit badge, they have to learn all about being good citizens and what good, what does citizenship mean? And one of the things we've been looking at is government, all the way from national government, state government, county government, county supervisors here, we've got city council people here. But tonight, they're focused on the city council. And we thought it'd be a great exercise to come in and have them see kind of what the city council does. We've been talking about what the city does and what services they provide and what departments do. And so hopefully, they'll be able to get some ideas about what goes on in the city. And maybe they'll be able to talk to different people on the council or in the departments, as time permits, to see a little further. So I think one of the things that the leaders have done already with these scouts is put them on a good path to good citizenship. And I've observed them in their meetings, and they're a bunch of great kids. I'm really proud of this group, so I hope they enjoy the council meeting. And thank you for giving us the time to come in.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here. We'll expect a little report of what you think, how we handle ourselves this evening.
I'll be interested to see if we have any future council members out there.
Yeah, right.
It's just too bad we're not doing budget talks tonight. They'd really like that.
So we will then move along to probably throwing out the person that can't turn off their cellphone. No, thank you, Mike. I just turned mine off. I hope I did it right, too. I can be guilty as well.
I'll call you soon.
So anyway, we're going to move on to the next item under Public Matters, which is a discussion and to give, and maybe give possible direction to working, we're working through the contract agreement with Solid Waste of Willits to provide curbside pickup of recyclables and waste. And we've had a ad hoc committee meeting for, off and on for four or five months, maybe even a little longer.
Yeah, I think.
Imagine. And Ron, and, I mean, I've read the agenda summary. So tonight is not probably an evening when we'll make a final decision on this. We're apparently looking for a little guidance.
Yeah.
Ad hoc committee's looking for a little guidance on how to proceed with the negotiations. So I'm not sure who else is going to open this discussion. Is it Adrian, do you got a few comments?
No, actually, I'll turn it over to Ron and Madge.
Okay.
So we have been meeting with the ad hoc committee consisting of Madge Strong, myself, Adrian, and Susie Holmes. And we've had discussions among ourselves, and then we've also had discussions with, I'm sorry, Mike Sweeney was also on the committee as well as our technical advisor.
And introduce Mike while you're at it.
Yeah, Mike Sweeney is the director of Mendocino's Emswa, Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority. He's our trash expert. And then we also had meetings with Jerry Ward and Emmett Jones from Solid Waste of Willits. And once we got down to the point where we were ready to discuss details. And I have to say that the meetings went well. There was no bloody noses, no yelling. We were very fine. And I basically, you know, there's a lot of items that had to be discussed. And I would say that we are probably in agreement on 75, 80 percent of the items. And we're down to a point where we felt it was appropriate to come to the council, let you know where we're at, and receive some direction, you know, where we should go from this point. I don't think it's appropriate to get into a whole lot of detail, but I just want to outline in kind of broad brush strokes where we are.
Maybe you could outline what you are hoping to obtain from the council this evening.
Right, okay. Well, tonight, there are probably two general items that are under question. One of them is the rate structure, and the other one is how to deal with food waste. So under the rate structure, we felt that it was justified to ask Solid Waste for a reduction in our rates. And this always gets a little tricky because, you know, we can say we want this much of a reduction. I didn't feel comfortable personally going that way. So we came up with three choices, three options for Solid Waste to pick up on. One of them was to provide a rate reduction to be determined by Solid Waste and then would be reviewed by the city whether or not this was an acceptable. And remember, this is all, when you negotiate, you're negotiating. It's a back and forth kind of a thing. And so that was the spirit in which we did this. The other option was to keep the rates at their current level and freeze them for five years with no cost of living adjustment. And for your information, every year, the existing contract that we have and the new contract that we're negotiating include the provision that every year Solid Waste can apply for a, and I guess the word "apply" is correct, not "demand" or something, but it's an application for a rate increase based on the cost of living increase. So option number two was to keep it at the current level and not increase for five years. And then the third one was, was one that was kind of interesting. It would be regarded as a service to the city, and that would be that Solid Waste would take on the job of street sweeping, take it away from the city that is now done with city employees and city equipment. So we presented that to Solid Waste about a month ago. And they came back with a counteroffer. One was to freeze the rates to industrial, residential, and commercial customers for one year, beginning January 1st of 2015. Also, to provide the street sweeping services as currently performed by the city. And the city, of course, would provide the routes and everything. And the third condition was the city would sell the street sweeper to Solid Waste for $500. So we discussed those in the committee. And we didn't go back with a counter-counteroffer because we thought at this point, it's, this is where we need to put it to the council and, you know, and see, you know, where you guys are. So as happens fairly often, when you have, you know, people who are working towards a goal, you get differences of opinions, not just between, in this case, the city and Solid Waste, but the, between some of the members of the ad hoc committee, which is, you know, it's not an unnatural thing to do. So to resolve, you know, we, obviously, we try to resolve the differences as best we can. And there have been differences in the past on, you know, on different issues that we've discussed, and we came to a consensus that, you know, an agreement on how we would go. But there are, this is one of the items, that there's a slight difference of opinion, a different approach on how to do this. So that's why we felt that it was appropriate to bring it to the council. So in order to address this difference and the other one that I'll get into shortly, we prepared what I called Addendum D and Addendum C, which was, Addendum D is a memo that I wrote stating my position on these issues. And the Addendum C was analysis that Madge Strong wrote, expressing her opinions on this. And when I'm, you know, finished going through this thing, I think Madge would want to speak to her points as well. So anyway, on this item, on this issue of the rate reduction, I propose as a possibility to freeze the rates for a period of three years, split here between five years and one year. And during this three-year period, again, there would be no increase based on cost of living. But as often happens, if there is, there is often a reduction in cost of living. So we would want to see that reduction reflected in the rates as well. So in other words, we're saying during this, this period, the cost of living can't go up, but it can come down. And the street sweeping services would be performed by Solid Waste, and, but they would not get our street sweeper for 500 bucks. Now, I don't know if we want to talk about this item first, or should I mention the other one, the food waste, and throw it all out there, or how do you feel?
Well, I'd like to hear all your comments relative to the contract. And then I'd like to hear Madge's, and then I'll hear the rest of the council members, and then we'll look for the experts in the audience to, or Jerry, and we'll take other comments.
We'll try and flush out this out a little bit up here before we open it up.
Okay. Well, now I'm going to go on to the food waste.
Okay.
Now, this one is, there's not this agreement. There is, in fact, there is definite agreement on the fact that we would like to see food waste collected separately. Right now, all the food waste, back where I came from, we used to call food waste garbage. We used to call garbage trash. And that's how we designated it, you know, on the East Coast. But anyway, right now, everybody takes their food waste, and they either put it in their garbage disposal, they put it out in their own compost piles, or they just throw it into, let's call it, the trash can right now. And what we're proposing is that the food waste is kept separate and sent to a facility to be composted. And I believe that there is pretty much universal support on that concept. The difference is exactly how that happens. So on the table, we have two possibilities. And one of them is a proposal that was put forward by Solid Waste using their facilities and their associated facilities. And the other one would have the food waste going to, well, I'm going to say Cold Creek Composting. And the reason I hesitate to say this, you know, to get specific, is because the city doesn't want to put itself in a position of declaring where these things have to go. We do have the ultimate option of approving or disapproving where, you know, any of the waste products goes. But we want to hold back from declaring, you know, absolutely that Solid Waste of Willits has to send their food waste to such and such. But for all practical purposes, Cold Creek Composting is the only permitted composting company in the county. So...
For food waste.
For food waste, yeah. Well, for composting. Well, composting is more than just food waste. It's also food waste, but also yard waste, green waste. They also take things like drywall, lumber, logs, things like that. So when we talk about Cold Creek, you know, in that context, I'm speaking in general, you know, we're not in any way intending to declare that this is where it has to go. Okay? So anyway, there's a couple of elements to collecting the food waste. It starts in your kitchen. And quite frankly, in my estimation, what happens between your kitchen and the truck that picks it up is the most, is one of the more important things that citizens have to deal with. Once it gets in the truck, you know, it's important to some degree, you know, as far as the environment and, you know, that sort of thing is concerned. But getting the garbage from your kitchen to the truck to get rid of it, that's the thing that really, in my estimation, you know, we, the citizens, are more concerned with. So right now, so the proposal was that the food waste be put into the green waste cans with the yard waste and stuff like that. Under the, we'll call it the solid waste scenario, they proposed that they would supply every one of their customers with a kitchen container. I guess it's about yay big or something, and a supply of biodegradable bags. And the idea would be you put the bags into the containers, you empty your garbage into the bags, tie it up, and drop it into the green waste can. Right now, the green waste can, oh, let me hold off. I want to keep this in a sort of logical sequence. Under the Cold Creek scenario, there would be, we would have to use our own bags. We would take the garbage, and each person has a choice of what they want to do with the garbage in their kitchen. They can either use one of the, you know, a plastic bag, like a Safeway bag, providing they're not all banned in Mendocino County in the future, and then tie it up in the bag and drop it in the green waste can. Or they can just take the container of garbage, walk outside, and dump the loose garbage into the green waste can. So in either case, you're going to have the green waste can that is right now emptied every other week. So the garbage is going to be sitting in this green waste can for up to two weeks, either in a bag or not in a bag. There are certain times during the year when there's no green waste in the green waste can, obviously. You know, we don't have a grass lawn, so we don't have grass clippings during the summer. So pretty much, I don't put out a green waste can during the summer. I have nothing to put out. In the fall, when I trim and stuff like that, then we have green waste. But at any rate, at certain times of the year, the green waste can will be empty. And theoretically, it's going to be sitting with garbage in the can. It's a large can, as you know, 65 gallons, right? 95, 95. And it's a large can, and it could be empty except for garbage. And I remember when I was a kid, growing up, we had a separate garbage can for garbage. And it was a metal can about, you know, this big. And we took all of our food scraps and put it into that can. And it was picked up once a week, and it had a lid. And I got to tell you, by the end of that week, it got pretty rank. Because you get some, it gets pretty ripe, and you get flies, and you get maggots, and you get all kinds of neat things inside this can. So I'm picturing this is what we're liable to have in this green waste can if it's allowed to sit there for two weeks. So one of the ways that we decided to approach this, well, first of all, we asked Solid Waste if they would be willing to pick up the green waste cans every week instead of biweekly. And the answer was that, and I'll let, when Jerry comes up, he can explain this again, but I'll paraphrase what we were told, is that in order to, right now, the green waste and the recyclables are picked up on alternate weeks. So the recyclables will be picked up, say, this week in our neighborhood. They're picked up this week, and next week, the green waste will be picked up. So it's never, they're never picked up in the same neighborhood on the same week. And in order to do this, he only needs to employ, you know, one driver to do the route. If he was to change the green waste to every week pickup, then it would require an extra expense to hire an extra driver. So as an alternative, we proposed, how about putting the garbage, the food waste, into the trash cans, the gray cans that we now, that are now put into now? And he agreed that would be a way to do it. So keep in mind these different scenarios, the every other week, the every week, the green waste can, the trash can, and now we'll continue our adventure. So we go on.
Are you about to the end of your adventure?
Well, getting closer.
Yes, I'd like to give Madge a chance.
Yeah, of course. But it's...
Take all the thunder out of this deal.
Well, it's just that, you know, the devil's in the details, and these little things that I'm trying to picture, the homeowner, you know, handling these things. So in either case, it's picked up and it's taken, well, in one scenario, it's taken to the transfer station where it's dumped on the floor. And if they're using the solid waste, the biodegradable bags, they will be physically separated and then sent off to a composter, which is located in Lakeport. If it's the other scenario, where it's either loose or in plastic Safeway bags, it gets a little more difficult if it's put into, into the trash cans. Because it's kind of hard to separate out the garbage from the trash when it's dumped. Because the trash doesn't, wouldn't go to Cold Creek, just the garbage would go to Cold Creek. And the green waste would go to Cold Creek. And it may be hard to follow, but, you know, it's...
It's all laid out here. I mean, we've all read this, and so...
So, but I, you know, I just want to let the public kind of know where we're at. So anyway, I guess, you know, with that going to a whole lot of detail, that's pretty much the end of my presentation.
Madge, you want to...
Yes. So, yeah, first of all, I just want to say that I do think Solid Waste of Willits has given the city very good service, and I really appreciate that. And it's been a 15-year contract, and we're looking at the possibility of renewing it for another 15 years. So we're trying to, in that process of committing another 15 years of contract with an outfit that we have had very good service from and that we like working with, and they're good citizens for our community. Clearly, the preference is to, is to continue working with them, provided the other part of, you know, my obligation as a city council member and our collective obligation is to get the best deal we can for our rate payers and also to meet the goals of our own desire for maximum diversion of waste into beneficial uses and to meet the state mandates. So I, that's the way I'm looking at it, is I think that there, we're trying to get the very best deal we can. I believe that there is the possibility of negotiating a little bit further and including a, what I would consider a much more comprehensive and time-tested technique for dealing with the food and mixed organics waste that if we're going to commit for 15 years, I really would like to see us move in that direction and not only deal with just food waste. I think it's very important that it be convenient to our residential customers, but it's also very equally important that our commercial and industrial enterprises can have an efficient service as well. And as far as food and mixed organics, I think there's a lot of potential there. You think of all the restaurants and food services and so forth. So I did in my report talk about where I believe there is room for a better deal for the customers as far as rates, and a better deal for the environment and for our mandated goals of diversion on food and mixed organics waste. But what I, where I came out with this is that by not insisting on any rate freeze or rate reduction, but rather the increased services that would be involved in a weekly collection of food and mixed organics waste, that we would meet both... collection of food and mixed organics waste, that we would meet both of those goals. The ratepayers would pay the same amount that they do now with the, you know, cost of living increases that, that come along with that, but, but we would negotiate, I think a very short-term additional negotiation to see if this is workable for Solid Waste to provide weekly pickup of the green waste that includes the food and mixed organics. Mixed organics does take in an awful lot of stuff that the little biodegradable food bags wouldn't. It takes in all the soil, paper products, things like, you know, pizza boxes and paper cups and plates, and, you know, anyone having a picnic, anyone who's, you know, all sorts of things like that. It also includes certain kinds of construction material, cat litter, there's, there's an awful lot of things that, that could be processed in a licensed mixed organics composting facility such as Cold Creek Compost that, that wouldn't be provided if we go only with a biodegradable bag approach. But I, but I do think it's essential that in order to make that effective, we have to have weekly pickup. So in an ideal world for me, we would have weekly pickup of all of the bins, so the customers don't have to remember which week they're in and which week they're not in, and not put them out if they're not full. Recycling, you don't need to put it out if it's, if you've got plenty of room. But I think the green wastes with organics mixed in would need to be picked up weekly. So that's, that's my essential proposal, and if, if we, I think we could work out an arrangement to do that through Solid Waste, which, as I said, provides us really good services. And, and I think it actually could turn out to be an advantage to them, because I think the mixed organics waste processing could be handled actually very efficiently without all that hand sorting of bags and all that stuff. So I think it could actually be very economical to do so. If, if, if we end up not being able to come to an agreement, I do think that it's not, not inconceivable to go to a competitive bid, request for proposals, because I think that's the way we'll find out if we've really got the very best deal we could get, but, you know, as I said, my preference is to work out something with Solid Waste. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. I have just a couple of basic questions of the ad hoc committee. You talk about a renewal of a contract. Are we, are we using our contract as a format for renewing the contract? Are we using a different contract?
The, the addendum A was points of agreement, and one of the-
No, no, I'm talking about, did you look at our existing contract, that document?
Mm-hmm.
And, and make changes to that, or are you using a different contract?
We, we looked at the existing contract, but we also looked at several much more recent contracts within our county that have been shown to be very good models, and so we're more basing it on that, and most of those points are in agreement.
So are all of the, are all of the particulars of the existing contract, other than what you've talked about, consistent into the new contract?
I can answer that.
Yeah, maybe-
Yeah, actually, we did use the existing contract as the template. We started with that. And before beginning any talks either among the committee members or with Solid Waste, we all reviewed the existing contract and made notes on things that we wanted to question. So, yeah, what, what we're presenting tonight is the, is what's different from the existing.
Okay.
But however, we haven't detailed some of the points that we've already reached mutual agreement on-
Right.
That include how you determine that cost of living. It's not just the CPI, it's also separating out fuel costs, tipping fees, and cost of living, so that, so that they're calculated separately, and, and there's also recycling revenues that come in, and that gets taken into account if the recycling revenues change, that also comes. So these are, there have been some modifications that have been mutually agreed and that are also consistent with contracts that have been entered into in other jurisdictions in the county. But essentially, it is, yeah, based on the existing contract.
Okay. So, you know, one of the things that, that was a, turned into being a bit of a fiasco in the previous contract, and I guess I'm just curious whether, what you guys think of it now, was that unpaid, unpaid waste disposal bill triggered a, could, could cause for the, the household's water to be turned off. So, did you, did you review that in the contract?
I did not, I'm, maybe-
It's in there.
It's in there. The other thing was that there was in that contract, there was a provision that if you didn't, it was mandatory service for every household in the city. If you did not elect service, you had a standby charge, for lack of a technical term. Did you review that? Did you, did you pass judgment as whether you wanted to continue that or not?
I believe those things didn't change, but correct me if I'm wrong.
I think, I think they're out of it, from what I hear. I mean, this is a couple of things that, you know, I was expecting to see, you know, part of this thing. Did you, did you look at the, how the revenues, the franchise revenues and the, and the other costs or other revenues that, that are part of the tipping fee or part of the collection fee, how those are distributed and to what, you know, where they go and whether they seem to be relevant now fifteen years later?
I think the answer is yes, yes.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of MSWA fees, you have, you know, I don't know, I can't remember what the number is, somebody told me that it was five dollars a ton. I can't remember what it is, but there's a franchise fee that is charged to Jerry to, to have the exclusive right to that. You know, there was, there used to be even a, a quote-unquote monopoly on recyclable, recycle stations in town, you know, that you couldn't have a, you couldn't have anybody else buying cans or copper or anything like that. And, and I think those were part of the original contract.
I think that's still the case.
And I think that is still the case, because this is an exclusive contract, and that's part of-
But clearly, there are, but clearly, there are other people that are, that are doing some of that stuff. So, I mean, I just wondering how-
People can bring their, their recycling to the, the transfer station.
They can, but they can also obviously take it to the guy out the south into town and the guy down on Shell Lane. I mean, there's other ones out there, and I, and I know that's been a kind of, an issue for Jerry. It's also been an issue of the right to have drop boxes in town and other people using, picking up, you know, having, having a little, having a little hauling business of hauling waste to the, to the landfill. There's an argument about whether that's, whether other people can do that in the community. I mean, I'm thinking that these kind of things, to me are-
Do you have an opinion on the mandatory service?
Huh?
Do you have an opinion on the mandatory service?
Well, I mean, I think that, I, I think that it's time to probably drop, I mean, I'd like to see us drop mandatory service, but that may have, I mean, I think anything that we ask to have dropped is going to, you know, anytime you ask for something or loosen it up, then it has an impact on rates, and that's what, what I'm kind of getting to, is that, you know, I, I really don't understand where street sweeping came into the picture at all. I mean, it's just a way to, for me to see that you, that you kind of use the landfill tipping fee as a way to get your streets swept. It's kind of a, it's kind of a shell game of, of use of public monies. I've got other comments, but those are just some of the things that have come to me in this, in trying to, you know, think about how we move forward with this thing.
I have, I have on that same thing, the thing that I think bothers me out of the last thing that you mentioned, is that no one from Solid Waste comes out and tells me that I can't pick up trash from our sticks or whatever from anybody else, but the city employee, which we pay as taxpayers, actually has to go out and do that. And I think that that's wrong, because-
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
What?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Okay, if, if I'm in business to pick up, and maybe it's just my neighbors in my neighborhood, and they have a tree that's down and, and the brush is down, and they don't have facility to take it, so I contract with them, I'll take it, then Jerry doesn't come, or, or whoever doesn't come from Solid Waste out to tell me that it's a, a place that you can't do that, they call John Sherman, which is our code enforcement person, and he comes out and tells me.
Right.
And see, I think that's wrong, because what you're doing is, is taking the taxpayers' money and you're subsidizing what they're doing. In other words, if, if, if they want it done, then they ought to do it. They shouldn't use the taxpayers' money all over the whole city to, to make their say on what happens and what doesn't happen.
Well, I think, I understand what you're saying, and that's what I was trying to approach before, because I've run into a few of those things, but it's just, you know, it's, it's been part of the existing contract, and I'm curious of how these, how, you know, I, I, we can jump off and talk about whether food waste is in the green can or in the gray can, or it's just sorted or it's not sorted, but there's, you know, there are other things that we've learned from fifteen years of working with this contract that created some uncomfortable situations for, for probably both parties, and, and this is the time to, seemed to me to be the time to kind of resolve them. And quite frankly, I think it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good time to get, check whether the money that we pay to MSWA is a, is a proper function, you know, or can, can those duties be fulfilled by the private hauler at, at a more competitive rate? It's our, you know, it's our one chance to get a look at that sort of thing, and it's a one, you know, to, to see that we're getting, you know, we're protecting the rate. Garbage is an, you know, it's, it's very boring, but it, you can get very wrapped up in it at the same time. But Polly?
It is kind of fascinating, and, and hearing about, you know, what some other cities are doing in this area, I think has been pretty interesting. I want to echo what Madge said about Solid Waste being a good partner. I, I mean, I've just been involved with so many stream cleanups or projects around town where they, you know, provide trash pickup, and I really do appreciate our working relationship with them. I may have brought up the street, street sweeping back in budget time, that was a, you know, it was a budget item. The idea being that I'd spoken to people in the community that had said, why don't the street sweeping coordinate with Solid Waste so that when your cans are out there, that's not the same day that we're also doing the street sweeping, because they would have to go around the bins, and it wouldn't be done as well? So originally, I was trying to figure out how we could coordinate, you know, between our two agencies to do the street sweeping on the non-trash day, but it, it came up that maybe they could take that on, which I think would be a benefit to our budget. And I think it, especially if the green waste is, you know, being composted, I think it could be a win-win. So, so I might be able to take some responsibility for that.
Well, it may be, it may be that everybody loves it, it just-
I like it.
Strikes me as-
I'd like to get rid of our street sweeper. We've got lots of stuff for our guys to do. But that's, that's how that came up. MSWA is a JPA, right? So how would we, is, would this contract be an area where we would change our JPA participation? That doesn't seem like, okay, so I'd be interested to hear about that, because it doesn't fit for me. And then if, I am very interested in the green waste happening. I think the ad hoc committee basically agreed on, on much of the past contract and these changes for the existing one. So the things that were brought forward were the issues of contention, you know, so I don't think that the mandatory service was brought up in the early discussions, because, you know, I don't know if it, if it was brought up at that point, but I have, I have heard from community members that object to being forced to have trash cans. However, I do consider the alternative, which is people just deciding not to have, have garbage service and then choosing to dump illegally, basically, or, or find other ways. I know there is some upstanding citizens that either have, maybe have trash service at their business, so they don't need it at their house, you know, they can only dump the trash at their business, for example, so I have heard that around the community. I would be open to discussing it. And then also, if Cold Creek does come and speak, it's mentioned in the Plan C, which would involve just putting everything into the yard waste bin, that the other organic materials, you know, that you could do some construction waste, but it also has including nails, door knobs, and doist hangers, and I just don't see how that's possible, so I'd be, I'm pretty familiar with composting, so I'd be interested to hear how that would work. I mean, I love the idea of, you know, remodeling my kitchen and tossing it into the yard waste bin, but I-
I think it's called a magnet.
Yeah, but what if the, yeah, maybe it is a magnet, it is a possibility. And I'm also wondering about dog litter. I know that dog waste is not currently supposed to go in the yard waste bins, and I wonder, that would be an asset to have a place to put dog waste where it could be composted. So, so when people come up to speak, I would love to hear answers on that.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to open this up to the public. I'd kind of like to keep this somewhat focused to trying to bring some recommendations back to the, to the ad hoc committee to move it forward rather than to have a whole kind of love fest about recycling.
Well, let me just say where I'm at right now, as far as, so that the rest of the council and the public can sort of see where I'm at. Generally, I, after going over all the pros and cons, I would accept keeping the rate structure the same and pursuing the food waste in a more, you know, really proactively pursuing the food waste. I don't yet have a set opinion on the mandatory service. And at this point, I would like to continue reinstating our existing contract, coming up with something that we can work out on the food waste portion, rather than going out for the RFP. But that's just a parameter at this point.
Anybody else care to clarify their position at this point?
Probably has a chance to talk.
All right. Well, I'm not sure we've given you a great segue to give a cohesive presentation of where you may stand on this issue, but Jerry, I'd like to ask you first, if you, or give you the opportunity to speak first, and, and again later if you wish, but I'd like to hear kind of what you vision as being a, a, the most economical and comprehensive project you might be able to suggest.
Well, first of all, Jerry Ward, Solid Waste of Woods. It was fifteen years ago, I was here negotiating a contract, I think it was a little different council, but Bruce was on the council and twisted my arm pretty well back then. I bet you guys never thought there was so much involved in garbage, huh?
This is good, this is a good day for them to be here.
Yeah, we need drivers, too. I don't know if you want to sort recyclable or sort dog doo-doo in that green waste cart. Anyway, I like to, what I've heard so far tonight, Mr. Mayor, is we're still looking at those two major issues, the rates and the food waste. And, you know, not negotiating it today at this podium, I'd be happy to go back to the ad hoc committee and we'll talk about the rates, and then I'd like to hear a little more about the food waste, too. I did put into our counterproposal that we would consider utilizing Cold Creek Compost if there are certain conditions met. So I'll, I'll get into that, maybe I'll wait and listen to what Cold Creek has to say. To answer your, some of the questions that came up, I brought the contract, draft contract to the city that was not formatted the same as the city contract. It was a contract that had been negotiated through the county of Mendocino for our franchise agreements. It was also very similar to what City of Ucaya just negotiated with the City of Ucaya, and then the City of Fort Bragg. So it brought all the, it brought a lot of enhancements, and I will name them- all the, it brought a lot of enhancements, and I will name a few of them. 15 years ago, I didn't need glasses. It has enhanced public education and community outreach. And there's now a liquidated, liquidated damage section in there. If we don't do our job the way we're supposed to do it, there'll be liquidated damages on that. There's enhanced termination procedures. There's enhanced grantee books and audits. There is, we're eliminating the dump fees that we've been taking off the franchise fees for the last several years. That amounts to about $6,000 a year. That'll be more money for the, the city. Amounts to about $500, I think as mentioned, at 350 a month. There is also, we talked about, it actually doesn't have mandatory collection. This mandatory collection has not worked. We do have several people that are on our basic services, they don't, still don't pay. And so we end up taking the collections. We're now, we haven't been dealing with the water situation for 10 years, I think, or more. We used to have an agreement back in the day where if it didn't pay their garbage bill, we'd submit it to the city, they'd put it on the water bill. If they didn't pay the water and the garbage, and the water was turned off. Well, that didn't work out too well, so we eliminated that a long time ago. There are lots of people that don't take, that don't have the need for the service. As Holly mentioned, there is businesses that take their garbage home. There's businesses that, or there's individuals that actually do a heck of a job of recycling, and don't really require a lot of garbage picked up. So, and before, we were competing for service 15 years ago, almost, with the landfill up here on the hill. Now, if we don't get them on the curb, they can bring it to the transfer station, and they'll pay the charge down there. But if they recycle, there's really very little garbage that they'd have to get rid of anyway. And it's charged by the cubic yard, so the less, the less garbage they have, the less they'll pay.
Do you, just on that, do you have people that are just recycle customers and not trash people?
Yes. We've been giving them a recycling card if they were on basic service, just to feel like they're giving something out of it. The $5 minimum fee, which hasn't been raised in 15 years, because it's a Prop 215 issue possibly, we, we, that, that included allowing them to go down to our buyback and drop-off center and get rid of material. That cost us money to do that. We needed some funds to, to cover those expenses. They can drop off motor oil, and antifreeze, and batteries, and cell phones, and clothing now. So we needed something to, to cover those expenses, and that's what that has. The answer to your question, Larry, we, we don't have the exclusive on green waste. If somebody wants to chop down a tree, or do a lot of brush, they can hire anybody they wish to call that away. What we're, what we're, what we want to see the exclusive is, we don't want a guy in a pickup truck picking up people's garbage for a fee, because we do pay a franchise fee to the City of Willets. They don't pay a franchise fee. So there is exclusive rights to that. We don't have exclusive rights to C and D. There is a house just tore down here on, around the corner. That was done by a local contractor, they hauled it to us. We don't have the right to, to bring in the debris box. It's only household garbage from a residential or commercial account. So that, I, I hope that answers your question. I think I've answered them all. We, again, I don't want to negotiate any more from up here, but I'd like to bring it back to the ad hoc committee. We can talk about rates. We can talk about a weekly collection service for green waste. But I don't, we do have some issues with providing everybody a cart, a little kitchen container. If you're still, if you're going to be dealing with, or want to deal with sheet rock, paper, cardboard, and kitty litter, I can't separate that once it goes in a garbage cart and dumped on the transfer station. Imagine, those guys, you wouldn't want that. Pulling that stuff out, if it all go into the yard waste cart, it goes into Coal Creek, then
Right.
When we, what we said we would do is, we would give you a biodegradable bag, put it in the green waste cart, then we could pull the green, that bag out of the green waste, which is a little easier than dealing with garbage. And our, typically, our garbage trucks compact much more. So you're going to have a lot more broken bags and garbage, because you're dealing with glass, and all sorts of things that could puncture those bags, where the green waste is a little easier to deal with. And we don't, we don't compact as much for our recyclables and our green waste. So I think that's about it. I'll answer any more questions, but there's still some, some more discussion on this. But I think the important thing is to bring it all out tonight, bring it back to the ad hoc, we'll kick it around, and hopefully bring you an agreement down the road. And if Emswa, if he wants to take over Emswa's service, that's, that has nothing to do with this contract. We can, we can deal with that. I think you've seen me over the last 15 years, guys, that we've been very flexible. We, we don't need anyone telling us to do what we do. We've, we've taken on a lot more responsibilities when it comes to recyclables, and put a lot more effort into it. And we'll do the same. We're, we're going to keep up, be very progressive. I want to appreciate, though, the, the ad hoc committee recognizing that our payroll has tripled. We've created a lot of jobs locally. We have 80 employees now in the community. We're, we're taking care of the, the services that need to be done. And we've got good equipment, we have, we have a good reputation, and I think it's something that we both should be proud of. Holly, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was envisioning using the yard waste container, or either way. I mean, that's, that's sort of how I would imagine it, because, yeah, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want people to have to sort through that stuff. And I do, I do know that, I was trying to think, you know, when you read this, you're trying to think of any possible issues. And I was thinking about pest issues as far as vermin and things like that. And I guess it doesn't really apply to the food waste, because right now, the food waste is going in the garbage.
Right.
And if you have raccoons now, then you would have them, you know, whichever way it went into. And it seems like, as long as they're closed, it seems like they're pretty good.
Crows, I think the crows are the most industrious.
Yeah, but the crows only get in there if it's open, just like, if it's open at all, that's when the crows paper our town. But that's why I realized that that maybe wouldn't necessarily be an issue.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask Mike to come up and, and address the couple issues on recycling percentages, and what, maybe bring us up to date on what AB 939 is, is presently, and kind of get my drift, Mike, what, what?
I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Sweeney, I'm General Manager of the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority. The AB 939 law, it dates back to 1989, you recall. And the basic mandate that the state put on all cities and the counties was 50% waste diversion. They later translated that into a measure of per capita tons, pounds of waste per day, but it enunciated the same principle. Presently, in Mendocino County, they recognize Fort Bragg, the unincorporated county, and the City of Ukiah as being well in compliance with the mandate. They're a little uncertain about Willets, because the figures are marginal, and in recent years, they've been below the, the 50% standard So they are going to be, they are periodically checking in with your city manager, and I participate in those calls. And the representative of the state comes, and they, they talk to, also talk to the hauler, and they press for more programs to more effectively divert waste. I think the state's role has been constructive over the years, but I think we have, in our community, our own reasons for wanting to divert as much waste as possible. If we don't recycle or compost your waste here in Willets, Solid Waste of Willets has to put it in a truck and haul it, what is it, 120 miles one way to a landfill in Sassoon, Fort Purtro Hills. Now, that's expensive, even though he does have a, locked in a long-term good rate. But it is a very expensive haul. Environmentally, it's, it seems like a real good way to waste fuel and cause unnecessary emissions. So if we're looking for the long-term future of your solid waste management, it seems like diverting everything we can is a no-brainer. And you recall that I did send each of you a mailer recently that highlighted what is attainable if you really try hard in the area of waste diversion. I cited the instance, the example of Portland, Oregon, which has now achieved 75% waste diversion, and has used this concept of, let's get all the mixed organics out of the waste stream. They've used that very effectively. They've promoted it heavily. They allow their residents to put not only the yard waste, but the food waste and the soil paper into that green cart. And they collect it weekly, along with the recycling. And they've been so successful at that, that they had so little residual waste, that what they've done is they've cut back the waste collection to every other week. And this is actually working successfully. They report, their survey is that 80% of their households and businesses are putting the food waste into the composting, and that they have actually cut their tonnage landfilling by 36% in the last several years.
What's, what's their tipping fee on compo, on that compostable material?
I don't know. Generally, though, if you have a very long transfer haul for your solid waste, as we do here, and as Oregon does, in fact, it is more, it is more cost-effective to compost, rather than to get rid of materialless trash. There is essentially, there's a potential cost-saving that can be captured there. In terms of how you go about getting, one, one other thing about the organics, the State of California has an opinion about this also, and they have passed a law recently that mandates you, and every other city, to develop a plan to divert organic waste from your households and businesses. And there is a deadline, you actually have to produce a report by the end of, at the end of this year, setting out how you intend to do that. When you try to figure out, well, I think one of the reasons why the state is so assertive about that is because they see it being done successfully by communities not only in Oregon, but also right here in California. Virtually, the entire San Francisco Bay Area, for instance, now uses this system of mixed organics diversion in the green cart, because they have a permitted compost facility that can handle all these materials mixed together. Not every community has it, not every county has it. We happen to have one here in Mendocino County that is fully permitted, and has a good operational history of handling all these mixed, mixed materials. And I did provide you with that mailing of a partial list of cities and counties in the United States that have successfully implemented, and are presently using this mixed organics approach. Is there some other question that I might be able to address?
So, so the, the food waste, what, historically, what percentage of the waste stream is that?
Madge, who also has some interest in the Bay Area, provided the committee recently with a, a survey that was done by the, I think it was the Alameda Waste Management Agency. Do you have that there by any chance?
I do.
And it shows the percentage of organics that are in the trash. They actually went in and sampled it. And my recollection is that it's coming out about a third of the total trash is compostable organics. It varies from community to community. Every community is different here in
Is that kitchen waste, or is that sheet rock and?
That's primarily food waste. That's the biggest single element. It varies from community to community, because like here in the rural area, you probably have a higher incidence of backyard composting, or people feeding chickens or pigs or whatever. So every community is different, and there hasn't been a comprehensive survey for Willets, or for actually any specific community in Mendocino County. But we have
Well, you say, but they have been, they have initiated that program in Ukiah. Did it change their diversion ratio?
Ukiah did a, a limited pilot, and we could discuss the problems they had with that. I think it might be instructive. But it is also, the mixed organics is available now, and has been for several years, in Fort Bragg, and in the unincorporated county around the areas of Fort Bragg and Ukiah. And it's been a trouble-free, problem-free process, just like it has in all these other jurisdictions. So in terms of, if we want to go in that direction, should we reinvent the wheel? Or should we go with an approach that is, is being widely adopted, and has proven to be trouble-free? That's a question I think we should be before you. Were there, did you have any other questions?
I do want to speak up for our diversion rates, because I think we've had a series of large construction demos that would have, you know, you, I think construction is really hard to sort out, and
Those have been taken into account. The state looks at it over a number of years.
Want to stand up for our diversion rates.
Thanks, Mike. We'll see if there's any, maybe some follow-up questions. We appreciate your expertise here tonight. Do we have anybody else that'd like to weigh in on this discussion this evening?
As in the public?
As in the public, yes. Sure, Martin, come on up.
Good evening, Martin Milliken, Coal Creek Compost.
Good evening.
Glad to see you again. This month, we're celebrating our 20th, 20th year as Coal Creek. And I was commercial composting for at least 15 years before that, but that's before they invented the permits. But I had a vision back then when I built Coal Creek, and I built it to compost this wide variety of materials. I now see it as way ahead of the time when I included food waste in the permitting. And I now realize that I've built for this, well, not just the, the county, but for the whole region, something that very few other places have. There is no such facility, and you, the surrounding county does. And I'm really surprised that not been more taken advantage of. But, and all represents change, change tough. So we're talking about composting at the Coal Creek Compost Facility, or composting at the Solid Waste Facility. I, I think what's been left out of the equation here is, ours is a fully permitted facility. Solid Waste Compost Facility, not only is not fully permitted facility, but it's not even big enough to compost the materials from Willets. They have a limit, 20 yards a day, 900 tons a year. It's all they can go in that facility. 20 yards a day, that's about four tons. We're permitted 400 tons a day, 900 tons a year. We're permitted 50,000 tons a year. So that facility that Solid Waste owns, in conjunction with the hauler in Ukiah and Lake Fork, is supposed to service not only Willets, but Ukiah and Lake Fork. It, it, it can't do it. So these materials that can't go to the compost facility are being ground up and sent to landfill as ADC, or being sent to the power plants to be burned. They can send to landfill as ADC, and count it as being diverted from the landfill. But all that's going to end in 2020. The state's not going to allow that anymore. Then you're really going to have to divert it, that means composting. We can do it, we're there for you. Soon, the diversion mandate is going to be raised to 75%. I don't know how you're going to do that, 75%, without Coal Creek and all the materials that we can do. We were there for you 20 years ago, we're there for you now, and we'll be there for you in the future. You got a question about nails and doorknobs and all that?
Doorknobs.
What, what we mean by that is that you don't need to pull the nails out of the wood waste, you send it to Coal Creek Compost. And the doors still have the doorknobs, and it's not a big issue. We have equipment that separates all that.
Okay, what about dog waste?
The dog doo. Well, what's a little pile of dog doo when we're bringing in 300, 400 tons of chicken shit? It's not, it's not a big deal. Or, or the cat litter, it just composts just fine. Then again, we've got all those dead chickens, and then we've got a little pile of dog doo. 24,000 birds a week, right?
Thank you, Martin. If you've got any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Martin, I, I've been to see your facility about, what, four or five years ago, I think. I was very impressed by it. At the time, I didn't know enough about composting to ask certain questions. On Sunday, I read an article in the Press Democrat about the Sonoma County landfill. And they have a, a composting operation on, you're probably familiar with this, on top of the landfill.
Very familiar.
And with the, with the heavy rain that we had recently, they have holding ponds, apparently, for the leachate. And apparently, the, they overflowed. And, and they're, they're having to truck everything out, pump it, and send it to the sewer plant, and things like that. So I guess my question is, what, what facilities, what safeguards do you have to prevent this kind of?
That issue has been a sore point for me for many years. When I watched that facility and other facilities get permitted, see, we were held by water quality to a zero discharge requirement when we built our facility. That is, we don't discharge anywhere. No effect on federal waters. They told us that when we permitted the facility. And they said, don't worry, Martin, we know it's an onerous requirement, but Oregon required the same of all other facilities. I watched, no other facilities were held to that requirement, especially Sonoma Compost. And I got pretty sore about it. I made so much noise, I got the item agendized in 19 I made so much noise, I got the item agendized in nineteen ninety-eight at the Water Board. And there were no fewer than five speakers from that facility, all of them saying that we can't afford to comply with the standard of compost upon Coal Creek and water quality led slide. I see that as unfair business practice and they're finally getting around to holding them to a zero discharge. They've been dumping water in St. Paul Creek since day one.
But I guess to the point, my question is, how is the runoff handled at your facility?
We work on an impervious pad. Around that impervious pad is an eighteen-inch concrete burn. It directs all of our runoff water into a plastic line pond.
And the pond, does it ever overflow?
No.
Okay.
Does that leach into the ground?
No, it doesn't leach into the ground. The pond is impervious, the pond supplies, composting is a water-intensive operation. The pond does not supply all the water we need, we use that water. In fact, it's great because it collects all that contaminated water, which is contaminated with the nutrients from the compost. And then we take that pond water and put it back on the compost, you're putting the nutrients back on it.
But I guess, I mean, what does happen to the water that's in that leachate pond?
It goes into the compost. It, tell you, it's a water-intensive operation. Composting requires a lot of water.
So you're constantly recycling it and putting it back onto the compost pond?
In the winter, the runoff goes into the pond and by the middle of summer, that pond is empty because we use that water.
Okay.
It's nice in the winter because we don't have to water the compost, in the summer we do.
All right, so you didn't have any problem with this last rain?
No, we have no problem with the rain.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Martin. Do we have anybody else that'd like to address this this evening? Yes, come on up and on.
And I haven't had quite the history that it sounds like many people here have. And I have been doing a slam dunk course in garbage and recycling and composting over the past, I'd say, ten days. I have been involved with composting when I lived in Sonoma County and before I moved up to Mendocino County. My, one of my big loves is gardening and I survived by getting compost from Coal Creek Compost, as do many of the gardeners and farmers in this area. Listening to Jerry and listening to Mike Sweeney and listening to Coal Creek Compost, it seems that it would be a very good partnership to have these agencies working together to provide more jobs, more resources for our city and our county. And I personally know, I'm most likely naive, but it seems to me that by working together, we improve many of the things that are going to be coming to light. I have put together a four-page letter and some other documentation that I have extra copies of, if anyone would like that. And it speaks widely to much of what we've talked about tonight. Again, I'll admit I'm probably naive, but I've, I feel like I've done a pretty thorough job. I would like to encourage our city council to negotiate to have our green waste, our food waste, our food contaminated waste products, any other kinds of materials that Coal Creek Compost can take and to have them haul to that facility. I can, what little I've done with calculating and costs, it would seem that costs can pretty much stay where they are. We, we, there's a lot to go through and work out, but I can only see it benefiting this community and this county to utilize a facility that is already built. I know, I came across some information about Sonoma County building a facility that would cost over fifty million dollars. We already have that facility here. The tipping fees that they would have to charge to cover building a facility like what we have here doesn't even come close to what I believe Coal Creek Compost is willing to contract, whether it's through Solid Waste or Willets or directly with the city. That would be very beneficial to us. I can't possibly go over everything that I have researched and put together, but I will leave these letters and information on the back table. And just, again, I did give a packet to each of the city council people. I do apologize, Mayor Burton, that I did not get a package to you until just before the night.
That's all right. This is not, you know, this is an ongoing, we're not making any final decision, we're just trying to give some direction. And I had a chance to glance at this, but not really read it. Appreciate you putting the time into it in a certain way, certainly. Read it.
Okay, thank you.
Seriously.
And I really, I had written this little thing out, but I do want to thank our city council for all the efforts you make on behalf of this city to do the best we can do, become better. And I really appreciate all that you give this community. It's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you for the time you put into this too as well. So, any other comments out here this evening? Second, third, and last call? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back up here for a little final discussion. Does the ad hoc committee feel like they've gotten any worthwhile information or are they seeking more specific direction from the council at this point? Or are you willing to go back to the task of trying to negotiate a completed agreement?
I'll read from Holly, and of course, Ron and I are both in the committee, so we hear from each other a lot, but I would like to get a little guidance from both of you, Larry and Mayor Burton.
Well, you know, I, I'm going to stand here probably first off and try and advocate for rate and, for the rate, well, for the rate payer, you know. I really, I, I don't, at this point, I'm not enamored with the idea of Emswa taking over street sweeping services for the city.
Solid Waste.
Excuse me. Of course. And, you know, I, again, I think that is a kind of a, you know, chasing the pea underneath the walnut. You're kind of, you're kind of hiding a, I think if there's thirty thousand dollars to be saved, then that ought to go to the rate payer and not mix street sweeping with the waste contract. So, that's my own thing. I'd rather keep, rather keep the two, I don't want to, I mean, that same thing you could say for another thirty thousand dollars, you know, he'd paint City Hall or, you know, I mean, I, I understand, you know, I think what you were addressing is a.
Thirty thousand dollar budget savings and staff savings, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that unless we laid off an employee, then that employee's going to go do something else, but, but I don't know, I don't think we'll see a budget savings, we'll just see that we free them up to do some other tasks. But, but, you know, what the issue that you originally brought up, I thought was a legitimate issue of, of not trying to street sweep streets the same day that you do, you collect waste and where we have to put the things out in the street to get at it. So, it seems unrelated, I guess, other than if they were, the same guy was doing both and couldn't do both the same day. I still don't think that's a, an argument to me that, so, I mean, I am, I would like to see us, I'd like to see this go back and try and negotiate a deal with our existing waste hauler rather than the R F P process on, don't think we're anywhere near an impasse as far as what I've seen presented to say that we need to look at taking that step personally, that's just going to matter.
Are you wanting to see, you mentioned earlier about the franchise feed breakdown, are you wanting to see?
Well, you know, yeah, I do want to, I want to see the, I want to see how the those, I mean, it's not something that I look at, I haven't looked at it, I was pretty intimately aware of it fifteen years ago when I did this, but I, you know, and I really think that that's the, that has been a, you know, I read in there, you think that we paid, you know, that we should have negotiated a lower rate back then, that Willets has been an inordinate supplier of profit to, over what the other jurisdictions are. And I haven't, you know, I haven't tried to analyze that to see if it's really true in detail, but, but I can tell you that, you know, for the fifteen years, no, let's see, for the nine years that I was on the city council, before we did that contract, we were here every year with Jerry doing this once a year in negotiating the tipping fee or, you know, we had the landfill. When this contract went into place, he didn't have the transfer station, he still ran the landfill. And, but, but we were doing these negotiations every year. And so I want to first just to say that you don't know how much better you have it, that we're only doing this once every fifteen years instead of once every year. And so, and to staff and everybody else. But, so I'm still committed very much thinking that we have a, you know, a working relationship here that we should be able to come to a final agreement on. And I'm not ready to kind of invoke a threat or whatever it could be perceived of as going to an R F P process. Larry?
I would first of all like to thank Madge and Ron for all of their hard work, and I know this is tough. I personally would like to have them work with the compost people and to be able to come up with a solution with both entities. I think that's the way to go. And the green waste, green waste can being picked up every other week at my house is not going to be a problem because I have enough leaves and stuff that go out every two weeks that, that it's not a problem. And I just think the facility of having it done in Mendocino County and really getting on the ball and being one of the cities that can do this is really a good step in the right direction. And that's what, that's how I would go.
I could fill my yard waste every week just because I have a sycamore tree, if anyone has one of those. I have to hold off.
Do you have?
Well, I was wondering how you felt about using the mixed organics waste rather than just exclusively the food waste and, you know, it sounds like we're getting some feedback on that, but I haven't heard from you on that.
Well, you know, to me, it's, again, I'm really, I'm probably dialed in a little bit more as to what the impact of it is to rate. And we're not quite going there. I mean, I think that, as somebody said here, maybe more than one person said, that I'm not sure we're here that we have, we want to dictate where that waste goes. I think we could dictate whether our, whether our residents have to package it in a separate container and put it into there or we want to have it to just be, you know, loosely commingled. And then, then Jerry would, would have to figure out, you know, that if, if his approach of putting it in bags is not acceptable to us, then, then it, you know, from what I've heard so far, that if we demanded that it be put in a, in a commingled green waste can, then the only way Jerry could handle it would be to take it to a approved facility. But, but then, you know, Jerry has to have, you know, along, in order to sign a fifteen year contract with us, he's got to have a fifteen year contract with that, you know, I mean, those who would think it would get a little bit complicated, doesn't seem like it ought to be overly, undoably complicated.
Your main focus is the rate, the rate level?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, you know, I don't think that food waste myself, I just don't really believe that it's a double-digit impact to recycling. I just don't think that it is, especially in the Willets with as many, you know, self-reliant people as we have. So, I don't think it's going to get us to the seventy-five percent, I don't think it's going to, I think it's, I don't think it's a double-digit impact to recycling. And so it's, it's not, to me, and I don't want to sacrifice, I don't want Jerry to say, "Well, this is going to cost me another fifty grand a year or sixty grand a year." And, yeah, I'll do it, he'd be happy to do it, but, you know, I don't, I, so, I'm, that's one of the vagaries to me. I'm not convinced that that's a, that, that activity is going to bring us to the next level.
I do think no matter what, and Jerry brought this up, that the additional educational requirement is going to be significant because, just because we decide that now you can put your food compost, and what I have is a little, these are very commonly sold, a bin on my counter, no bag, and it has carb, it has carbon filters to stop odors getting out into the kitchen, that right now I have to compost myself, but I'm not really good at it, so I would love it to go somewhere else. But I think that, I think the, the community education as far as what can be recycled, I mean, they already have to do this with stuff getting in the wrong bin, I'm sure.
I'm getting too old to be convinced that education never works at all.
It does, people try to do the right thing.
Yeah, people do. I was, one of the other advantages that I see of the mixed organics waste is that it is a path that has already been followed in many, many other communities, you know, many, many in California and a couple, a few even in our county. And so, we're not, you know, we can get a lot of experience secondhand and we don't have to, we don't have to be the trailblazer completely. Somebody said to me, "If you're going to walk through a minefield, you follow somebody who's already walked through it, you don't pick a new pair."
Up to a point.
You know, but, but if, there are a lot of obstacles and it is difficult to.
Next to the last step.
The educational outreach that's required to introduce something new like this, it'd be nice to use a system that has been tested and has been successful in other places and benefit from that experience.
Well, from that, I'd like to, I'd like to wrap this up and move on and, and see what you guys can glean from what you've heard and, and direct, I direct the ad hoc committee to reconvene with Willet Solid Waste and continue to try and hammer out an agreement, if you would, if you would please. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, guys, feel free to.
That was your moment.
Everything you never wanted to know.
Thanks for sticking around. So, now we're moving on to an update of the city's emergency water supply project. Ron?
Not much has changed because of the storm. We didn't, we didn't get our slab poured before it started raining, so, and since then, the guys have been doing some storm cleanup and they'll get back on it tomorrow mid-morning and we're going to schedule a pour and slab for, for next Wednesday, so.
I think we're supposed to have, what, seventies for the rest of the week or?
Yeah, it's supposed to be nice, so, we should have it ready to go. We're competing with the thousand-yard pours, so.
Yeah. If, if you guys need a man lift, I might need one.
Okay.
When it comes to putting up the building.
Uh-huh, okay.
A rough turning man lift.
Right. We'll have to.
Help you out.
Yeah, we'll have to find out about that. I have a total expense to this date, I don't have a final, how that affects our final cost. As of January thirtieth, we. As of January thirtieth, we've spent one million four hundred and fifteen thousand nine thirty-three. We've, we're asking for reimbursement against the five hundred thousand dollar grant in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two, five sixty-three at this point, so our total expense.
We've received that much money?
We haven't received that yet. We've submitted for reimbursement. Most of it, so that'll.
Is that one of those deals where you have to wait till you expend all your own money before you can do the grant part?
There's a certain, there, there's a.
There was no loan amount.
Scope of work that they, they allotted a certain amount of money for each item, whether it be the replacement well or equipment for the building. I don't have the specifics, but we've have four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in qualifying expenses that we've submitted for reimbursement, which would leave us at nine fifty-three, three seventy at this point. And we just have to get an idea where we're going to be at the end, and then you have a chance to get to that. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move. We approve the consent calendar?
I shall move.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any public comments on the consent calendar? Real call, real please.
Councilmember Strantik?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mathero?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Reverend?
Thank you. Here, yes.
Get a new bus stop.
Good. Yeah, I see that. Right to appeal due to my limited speaking ability, and I'm not going to recite that this evening.
I have, I had one comment about the minutes, I'm sorry, and that was, should the minutes of January twenty-eighth, should the closed session also list the REMCO item that we added there? We added it on page one, but it didn't show up on under fourteen, closed session.
Any reports from the city managers evening?
Yes, a few, a couple, sure. First of all, we just, Kathy and Susan and I just returned like this afternoon from attending the annual Palmer Conference, which is the Public Agency Risk Managers Association. It's an excellent conference. It's one that Remus sends its member cities to every year. So let's see, on the, on the downside, you hear, you go to these sessions and you get all these updates and you just, at least me, want to head for the hills screaming because there's just so much to worry about and look out for and mitigate and so on and so forth. On the upside, you know, you do get an opportunity to attend some sessions that are inspiring, and one such was from a gentleman who has worked for Disney for thirty-five years and teaches at the Disney Institute, and really talked a lot about that whole enterprise and, and how it was built with very deliberate intentions, with over-managing details to achieve the excellence that they have over the years. And so I think we all walked away with something in that regard. So good conference. We left Saturday and then got back this afternoon, so just getting, trying to get back up to speed. No major issues with the storm. I kept in touch with Ron and Jerry. You know, we had a few flooding spots here and there, but compared to most other areas of the county, we fared very well with the storm. The mid-year budget workshop, we have, had slated that for February twenty-third. We can still do that, but we've been asked to re, to consider moving it to March second. And so I wanted to put that out to all of you. So this is the late afternoon, I think we said four o'clock, to accommodate all of you as well as the community.
I can do either one. The mid-year budget review and.
And revisiting the councilables. And this would be followed by a Saturday morning workshop on March twenty-eighth.
That's March second?
Yes.
At what time?
Four P.M.
March second. Is that doable?
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of time on March third, but I'll be there.
You're saying March twenty-eighth is?
The Saturday morning one. So all we're looking to move at this point is the first workshop, which we slated for February twenty-third, moving it to March second. They actually suggested March ninth, and I knew that wouldn't work at all, so, so March second is good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And March twenty-eighth does not work for me. Just one person.
Right. Anything else?
Yes. I've been getting questions on REACH and specifically the initial study, and I just wanted to briefly report that, yes, we did receive the initial study. It's been under internal review. We expect to be releasing that publicly and kicking off the thirty-day public comment period, possibly Friday or early next week.
Did REACH execute anything with?
Not as of yet. Not as of yet. Let's see, Brown Act meeting, training is scheduled for Friday, Friday, February twenty-seventh at noon, noon to two P.M. So we'll be noticing that as we would any other meeting. And the fire department board is also going to participate in that training.
Time again?
Noon to two P.M.
And so will that be a public meeting if there is someone who serves on some other local group that wants to learn more about that?
Sure.
Yes.
Let's see. There's been no news on the Caltrans bypass collapse, so I just wanted to let you know, as soon as we have any information, I think it'll be made rather public, but Caltrans, you know, has yet to release anything, any updates to us since, well, since it happened.
I do think on that, I had on that, that on my council member reports from recommendations, I was wondering if it would be worthwhile to, at some point, convene the Caltrans ad hoc committee to discuss with them. I mean, maybe we wouldn't get anything any sooner, but I do think it's important that we find out something. There was an article in the paper saying that we may never know, and I don't, I don't think that's acceptable for.
Well, what we do know is that, is that OSHA, Cal OSHA is investigating the matter, and until that report comes out.
Right. We can't really say anything. Yeah.
And then lastly, I'm sure you all read in the newspaper about the Anthem Blue Cross data breach. And so we've been receiving notifications from our.
I didn't.
Okay. Major, major data breach a week or so ago. And of course, the city carries Anthem Blue Cross for all of its employees. And so we've been receiving communications from our broker on that. And the latest one was this afternoon, and I'll be releasing this to all of the, the employees, but they're going to be offering free credit monitoring for anybody that was enrolled currently or previously, whose data may have, may have been breached.
Interesting. There are a big, that's a lot of people.
This was, according to what we were told, the largest data breach they've ever encountered.
They'd be Anthem Blue Crosser?
Well, they're going, they're ethical companies, the hackers are.
Interesting.
All right. Now, get rid of your credit cards.
And I, I had another question, and you may not know this, and I don't know if anyone, if anyone here knows this, because I know our building department is so thin right now, but do we have any more information on the John's Place cleanup?
Just that, I was going to report on this actually under community development. They have, well, let's see, the insurance company did release funds to them. They have applied for an encroachment permit from the city. That's not yet been issued. It's just pending the contractor providing satisfactory verification of their satisfactory coverage for the work they're going to be doing.
Can we encourage them to take down that little building as well? The, my understanding is that it's been condemned. It's right behind the bar across from the skunk depot. It's boarded up, but it's, my understanding is it's condemned and it's, it would be great if we could just have a clean slate right there.
I, I was, I, I saw some correspondence relative to that insurance certificate night. It's, it seems to me that the city's liability in this is, I mean, the, the damaged property is private property, and it's a, it's a responsibility of the private property owner to clean that up. And if, if the, if the contractors got a license and has workman's comp insurance and has liability insurance that's up to the comfort level of the, the person they're contracting with, I, I wasn't sure why we were demanding higher levels of liability insurance.
We're simply requiring what we always require with encroachment permits. And it seems to me that that's a cost that they would pass on to whomever they're working with. By not doing so, by us lowering our limits or allowing them to lower their limits, we're incurring greater liability. They're going to be operating, or working within the city's right away, which is why they're seeking this encroachment permit. And due to the nature of the work, we don't think it's prudent to lower the limits.
They're not going to be working on their own property?
They will, but also within, somewhat within the city.
We're going to have to go straight away. Have to take it as a discreet process. That's a sidewalk.
Okay. So there's no flexibility there in the city to look at?
We, we considered it, and I even consulted with our risk carrier, and they came to the same conclusion.
That's been communicated.
It has, which I think is what generated the communication to you.
All right. Anything else? Then I think we're moving up to department recommendations. I lost track. Anything from the city clerk?
Not this time.
All right. Finanz?
Do you like how we just zoom past the ROPS?
I do. Thank you. Thank you to you.
So we had our sales tax consultant here last week, and she gave us this nifty little report that we gave in for informational purposes. But I wanted to point out one thing. It shows that third quarter two thousand fourteen on the very first page, local results. It shows an eighteen and a half percent.
Is that five D?
It's five.
What is it in there? I have to admit that, I didn't, I looked at that.
It's a. Five D.
Oh, five.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, so what were you, what were you pointing out? That the actual percentage change from third quarter two thousand fourteen over third quarter two thousand thirteen in receipts portion, it shows that there's an eighteen and a half percent decrease. And I wanted to point out that there's a timing issue, and there's also prior period adjustments in those numbers. The actual decrease for what actually happened in this period is more like thirteen percent. And that is from the cost of fuel being so much less.
But then the percentage change from January, March twenty thirteen is actually up three point four percent, right? That's on the last page?
Right.
Am I reading that correctly?
For April through June. This is January, Mar, uh.
Yeah, why does it say twenty thirteen if you have twenty fourteen above that?
Let's see, April through June sales. And it says percentage change from January. Oh, so this is just saying that within the year it went up?
Yeah.
Not, not comparatively?
Right, correct. It's not comparatively.
I wonder, is that a typo, Suzy, where it's not looking at the same quarter?
Yeah.
Final results, it says April to June two thousand fourteen, and then percent change from January through March. Shouldn't that be April through June two thousand thirteen?
On page five?
Yes.
For January to March two thousand fourteen, but it doesn't make a lot of sense that it's different, different months and a different year.
This is what actually happened in June, April through June two thousand fourteen. They're showing the actual.
Right, but that percent change from?
January to March.
January to March two thousand thirteen. Why, why is it either a different quarter and a different year?
I don't know that I can answer that.
Well, it's probably the prior quarter, but it's, is it the, is it meant to be the prior quarter in the same year, which would make more sense than the prior quarter a year, a year.
So it might be a typo.
It might be.
Well, I certainly appreciated this because what it really shows in stark terms, and this hasn't changed, this is, this is how we roll in, in the city of Willets, is that, you know, the majority of our sales tax comes from gas. So we really, as a council, need to be thinking about how we're going to be preparing for what's going to be a decrease. And I know we, it's going to be hard to gauge how much that's going to decrease after the bypass goes through, but I would imagine that certainly a, maybe a couple of the service stations might not be able to continue. I mean, some of them are going to be on the Highway twenty corridor, but that's really going to, I think it's going to be a challenge.
I mean, I think what we see in this, if, if we continue to see, you know, two dollar in a quart of gasoline or two thirty-five or whatever it is, essentially half-priced gasoline for a couple more, you know, where it actually shows up in these, in these deals. I mean, that's, that's a.
It's going to be like that?
I think, I think that'll be a pretty good indication, that. I mean, post-bypass, gas will probably be back up to five dollars, you know, four fifteen a gallon, but you might be selling half as much of it. So I mean, I think that it is going to give you a snapshot that might be in the ballpark.
Right, yeah. It does make me want to, as a council, you know, continue to work with the Chamber of Commerce possibly more intensively to, you know, make sure that the, our top sales businesses are, are receiving the services they want and, you know, going strong.
Yeah. And I also.
We talked to Tom about revenue sharing.
Yeah, that's, that's progressive.
On page three, at the, the top of page three, although the service station revenue has gone down from its high was five hundred thousand, but the building materials whole day appears to be up quite a bit.
Bypass.
So.
Oh, bypass?
Oh, so that, that's what that is, okay.
Really? How much of that is the local sales tax stuff?
I just assume that they have contracts for erosion control.
Well, NorCal aggregates, for what?
That's true.
Well, also the lumber for the Hail Creek, for example, is coming from Mendo Mill.
Nice.
So that, that's, that's pretty constant. And, and the concrete, there's been a lot of concrete being sold around town lately.
Okay. That's, this helps.
Well, thanks for this. I've been looking for, trying to see what sales tax has been doing.
And then the thing, the auditor was here last week. He left. He needs a few more pieces of information from us that we can do remotely. And other than that, we're done with our audit, so.
Thank you, Suzy. Anything from the legal side, I think, Beagle?
No, not really. We have a trial coming up March sixth.
Once that over. Public safety, chief?
Real quick, we survived the storm. We did lose a couple of trees around town, including one in my own backyard. I think the fire department was out there and covering a couple of the issues we had. Obviously, they got the accidents we normally get. Ron and his guys put the sandbag station up there, and I think it was a joint effort between us and the fire department, and it had to do with being able to get some supplies and things in place so that the city wasn't very certain a hundred percent. And today, we did a training day with the officers at the new hospital. They gave us a tour and covered some issues that we may or may not have there, and covered some security issues so that we're familiar with the hospital. It's very impressive in there. So, being a little bit before they're in, not, they're behind schedule a little bit. That's all I have.
It was a little alarming to see they have the police force in the parking lot this morning, that I realized what it probably was.
Well, we're, we're planning for the move, and that, obviously, that's been set back, but at the same time, we've had some. But at the same time, we've had some security concerns as it gets commercial being done. We don't want anything jeopardizing their schedule.
Or vandalizing, yeah.
So, and plus, it gives us a good opportunity to be able to roam around in there. Once the place is hospital clean, it'd be real hard to trudge around in our work boots in there. So it's a good opportunity to get an idea of what's there and what concerns from the maintenance staff they feel that we may have. And it sounds like they're going to have a, I'm going to call them like mini repeaters in there so that we'll be able to get out on our radios. There's a lot of insulation that's in there for health reasons and so they're, they're putting in some infrastructure in place so that if I'm screaming for help in the middle of the hospital, because they're having an issue, they'll be, we'll be able to get out on our radios, so.
Thanks, Jerry. I don't see anybody here from, from, well, public works. Do you have any more, Rod, from engineering or public works?
Actually, just a few things. Start off with water. Clarifier cover is supposed to be here on Friday, is supposed to be installed by the twenty-seventh. And we're looking like having every, all the construction and punch list items completed by March first. And we'll have closeout project by May first, so that's good news. Got word that the, the new, the new water pump's online, the reservoir, and it has a little more power than the old ones. Pumping up to, so we need to adjust because our system wasn't set up for that much. I think it's fourteen hundred gallons per minute the new pump is able to pump versus a thousand with the old ones. So.
And are both reservoirs topped out?
Yeah.
It looks like it, yeah.
Yeah, they're both overflowing. We're trying, we're going to try to get the splashboards up this month if we can get permission to do so. I think we just said we need to have our valve that we're putting in probably late next week in Centennial, the week following, depending upon how things go with the groundwater treatment plant. Once we have that in, then we'll try to get the splashboards okay to go in. We're proposing to start, start flushing program in the next couple of weeks, probably the sooner the better. So we'll have to put out a public notice and let everybody know that there's, there's going to be some, we're going to have some brown water. We are going to, it's just something that needs to happen because it hasn't happened for a couple of years now and we're having regular occurrences of brown water from a hydrant being turned on too fast or something to do with the construction at the treatment plant causing, you know, water to come down the hill a little faster than, than normal. So that will take a couple of months. We're talking about starting in the beginning of March and having it done, or, yeah, end of February, beginning of March, having that done by the end of April, beginning of May. And it will use between ten and fifteen million gallons of water, so. But it's something that we need to do.
Dave?
Questions on water? I don't have anything on sewer tonight. Public works, though, like I said, actually tomorrow morning, they're going to fix a water leak on Spruce, at Spruce and Redwood. And then go to the groundwater treatment plant and get that finished up forming wise. Like I said, I'm going to form, pour that next week. And the other two major, major items are the Main Street water line. We want to start that beginning of March, first week in March, I think it's March second. We want to start that with our crew. And immediately following that, we have a storm drain repair on West Mendocino between Easy Street, actually at Meadowwood. So then we have a pipe there that's a recurring problem that we need to, it won't be the permanent solution, but it's going to be a fix that'll get us through until we can, we can repair the entire line.
Rod, have you noticed over, across the street from the fire department? I checked with Carl, it looks like there might be a leak right there by the, I checked with Carl because he was saying that they did use the hydrant, but I think there's a continual, he thinks it's more than just what they've used.
Right here?
Yeah, literally right across the street. I think there might be a little.
Okay, well, I haven't noticed one.
It's hard, it's hard with the storms because, you know, puddles are puddles, but, yeah. Yeah.
How, how long is the Main Street, it's clearly one block primarily, Main Street north, just north of Commercial?
It's not even a full block, yeah, but it's.
And how long is that going to take to pull roughly?
Two weeks, two weeks would be a maximum. I think we can have it done in less, in, in less than that.
And there'll be controlled, some controlled traffic things happening?
Yeah. That, so we have to cross, we have to cross Main Street there. That's going to be the most difficult. So they assure me that they can have the, since we've dug up this side of Main Street so many times, that we can do the excavation in one day with a, with a vector truck.
It's all do-sorry.
So we just had this talk today and that is the number one priority after the groundwater treatment plant. It's gotten to a point where we can walk, walk away for a few weeks, so.
And this isn't asked, but I did notice that the museum sign was knocked over. It's on the corner, yeah, completely off of posts. So I informed the museum about that. Good, thank you.
Yeah, Larry. Yes.
Is there any kind of percentage that has to happen on a pipe breaking and before it becomes a real, you know, I mean, it's, Spruce Street has been tore up probably four or five times a year at the minimum. And I have said many times, we ought to just put a zipper on it and just unzip it and do the things, because there's couplers over couplers now. And we need to eventually, as a city, need to come up with some kind of thing to start replacing some of these things. And I know there's a lot of things that are important, but, you know.
It's my understanding that Spruce needs to be addressed this, this next year, Spruce, and, and I just know that Spruce is one of the, one of the two or three streets that needs to have the water main replaced. And it's, it's, should be a high priority, so.
Okay.
I think there's some more, there's some more money available out there now. And it's my understanding that Water Research Control Board has streamlined the process to go after this money. At least that's the notice we got this week, so.
That's nice.
I think it's by Friday, actually. So hopefully, we can, we can take advantage of that and use that for these types of projects.
I would, I'd just put my two cents in for, I've been talking with Ernie Withes on Franklin Street and what PG&E's planning to do with an overlay or rehab of that. But are you, have you initiated any discussions with PG&E on?
I've asked if the, I've asked if, Ashley, was that Erdis?
Erdis.
If she could have the right person contact me so we could figure out a way to, to have them contribute to our rehab project rather than just pay with a six-foot swath, which is what I proposed. So I haven't heard back.
Great if we work together.
I haven't heard back yet. Thanks.
Just out of curiosity, I guess I never asked this question, just what is going on there?
They replaced the gas line.
Yeah, they were replacing all the, and I think it turned into a bigger project than they, for originally planned.
Well, they origi, I mean, what they, what they did is they directionally bored it. They bored in a new gas line and then they potholed to reconnect all the laterals. And it just, it just turned into a.
Yeah, I talked to the guy at the, at the pipeline station.
Yeah, and obviously.
Dozy.
I guess the main gas line probably comes off of Main Street, that's what it turns into. But it went into the middle of Main Street, obviously, and went into the middle of Blossom Lane. And so.
Turned out to be a much bigger project, I think, than they were there for like a month.
No, they were there for.
I think they're still, are they still there?
Yeah, they're still, they're working, they had it.
Yeah.
Shut down last week.
Well, I think.
I mean, I'm glad they're replacing.
Might be done now, but, but it's, you know, that six-foot idea doesn't really work because their, their potholes are, are offset from each other. If you, you know, they have to pave ten to cover up everything that they destroyed. And I just can't help but think that we'd be better off to come up with some revenue sharing agreement, let them pave it and we'll pay the.
Little picture, vice versa.
They could pay it, they could pay it cheaper than we can.
Okay, yeah.
Have them grind it.
Do you know, do you talk to Ernie directly?
Yeah, I talked to him today about.
Good.
And that's what I was suggesting, but he knows the right people to talk to on that. Okay, anything else, Rod?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Move on to council and committee reports.
It met on Monday, February second. We elected a chairman, which was Dan Journey, and the vice chair was Dan Homerschild. And we have two new members, one from Ukiah, and our new supervisor is the other MCOG member. And the main thing that we talked about was the service transfer plan of public and human service, services. And it was all of the things than anybody that's ever been on MCOG. It's the services that we do not do and how can we do them? And so they have it down to what we can do and how we can do it in a fixed package. And that's what we were talking about. The most interesting thing to me was that the governor has signed the bills and is trying to come up with a pilot program of a way to circumvent the gas tax by coming up with miles that you travel. And they have to figure out how they are going to collect it from all of us and what device they're going to use and, and how much it's going to be. And that's where it is.
You're going to use your cell phone?
They tried it before and before and it's never worked before. So we'll see what happens this time. But they do have a pilot program that, that they've authorized and the mayor, and the governor has signed it.
Yeah, well, those doggone electric cars don't pay any gas tax.
It's true.
Well, it's the mileage, too, that some of the car, that's another killer.
Yeah, I know. It does, it's doggone it.
That's one of the issues.
Uh, LAFCO.
LAFCO met, were primarily, we approved the Willets Municipal Service Review, right? That was very, the lead there.
As presented?
As presented, not a hundred percent. There were a few additional tweaks.
Yep.
I don't know if I can recall them right now.
No, I can't. There are, there are.
I'd rather not know.
But it's done.
It'll go on a shelf and no one will see it.
Yeah, it's, it's done and unless, you know, unless we're going to be annexing something or, we'll bring that back up. And we will be doing this sphere of influence, but that's farther down the road. Right now, we're going over fire districts. We've lumped all, so just like we're, we're forced to do an MSR, every district has to do one, but fire districts are similar. So we're reviewing Hopland and Leggett and Willets and everyone, all as one.
Okay. MTA?
Had met, I reported last time and we don't meet again until after our next meeting.
Did we hear enough ESO for the evening?
Absolutely. We haven't met since the last meeting.
EDFC, we don't really belong to that anymore, but are we still?
We still have a rep and we, there's a meeting tomorrow, which I don't think I'm going to be able to attend, but, but I will. I'm, I'm very interested because they are about to enroll, unveil the direct public offering, which is an opportunity for people to invest in our local enterprises, social responsible, local investing. So we will be probably having a Willets forum on that subject within another month or so.
Right. Leake?
Leake hasn't met yet, but the regional meeting has been changed from Lake Port to Cloverdale in March, March twentieth.
Okay. Water and wastewater have not met, revived in?
Have not met.
Probably not met. Finance is coming up, ad hoc committees. Caltrans bypass has not met. But we probably need to, to meet just to, I'd like to see us meet here before too long just to, to review where we stand on, on the impacts to the wastewater plant and the right-of-way agreements and all of the, there's three or four different outstanding issues on that that are just kind of simmering and none the least of which is our, our downtown plan implementation as being part of their, I think that would be who was to.
Has the Main Street improvement, on that note, has the Main Street Improvement Group met at all? They are meeting on the seventeenth.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On the subject of the Caltrans committee, too, in addition to, you know, advanced planning on Main Street, I feel, I always have been concerned about their plan for Sherwood Road intersection, but after the failures at the southern interchange of rocks sliding down the hill and the collapse of the, at the viaduct, I'm even more concerned than ever that a thirty-foot-high retaining wall built back into that hill, you know, excavating that, that hill very substantially and then building a thirty-foot-high retaining wall gives me not a whole lot of confidence that it will be problem-free. So I, I think that, that aspect of the, of the relinquishment agreement needs to be at least really looked at carefully.
So you're suggesting we get some third-party engineering firm to look at the design of the wall?
Well, I, I have suggested as an individual, not as a city council person, but I've suggested that there might be a better way to redesign that intersection than what they're proposing. And even if it may appear to cost more initially, it might actually work and not create some of the problems. So I, I think they should at the very least be evaluating those kinds of alternatives, something that doesn't require excavating the whole hill.
I do know that there's a pretty massive wall on Highway twenty, you know, that seems to be just fine. It's like forty.
It's also a earthquake zone.
They kind of build them all the time.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no shortage of examples. Well.
My two cents.
I, yeah, I think that the, we can get an update on how the Sherwood Road project is progressing from them. I think an update on that part is certainly relevant. It's part of the, be part of the agenda of what we're talking about. Anything new on the solar array?
No, we're still feeding that up. We're hoping to get together shortly.
And Bruce, did you want me to continue on that or are you taking on that position?
Uh, you know, I, I, I guess I had a moment of sincere desire to do that, which is semi-passed. I'm not, I'm not completely committed to it, so I, I think at this point, I'll just leave it the way it is, unless you would like to, to step down from that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, then we'll just go with it the way it is. The Main Street improvements we talked about, Center for the Arts.
And they are meeting Friday.
Friday. Okay. What time?
I think you agreed to that. I think we checked with you. Noon?
Yeah, that was before I found out I had to go for ten AM, but I'll see.
I, I did receive communication and a question about the muse, our representative for the museum, which I.
Did you sign up?
I told them to check with the city because I couldn't, I couldn't remember when we were, because you were saying that you couldn't, you were going to do the museum, but you couldn't do it if you were also going to do the Art Center.
Right.
Because basically, I think it is a valuable.
I'll bring it up, the town hall meeting this Sunday, I'll bring it up. Say, people, it's supposed to be how people get more involved in their community.
Right. So it could easily be a community member that would be interested in serving on our behalf. Good plan.
Stand up, yeah, okay. Council member reports and recommendations?
Yeah, I've got something. I didn't know if it'd be worthwhile considering moving up this item. I was just thinking about like the last meeting when Larry was talking about like putting Christmas lights farther down on Main Street. You know, there's things that we bring up that no one's here at the end of the meeting, so no one gets to hear sort of our responses to their feedback and stuff. I think it might be worthwhile move that up. And I also just read something about a town in New Jersey, Newark, New Jersey, they're selling city-owned lots for $1,000 a lot as, as a Valentine's present to encourage people to buy a vacant property. I thought that was an interesting strategy.
Maybe buy a block in Detroit for that one.
I think you have to be, you have to be a couple. You don't have to live in New Jersey, though. They want you to move there. We don't have a lot of city-owned property that's empty that we're needing to get rid of, but I thought that was a creative strategy.
Have you been to Newark lately?
No. And I'm not planning on picking him up on it.
Don't criticize them. We, we don't need to, I'm sure there's, it's a lovely place. Wish I had a chance to visit there more often. Okay? Any good in welfare?
Yeah. We were able to host the Leadership Mendocino class on Friday, which apparently all we need to do to make a major rainstorm is to schedule this event because the last, we postponed the last one due to the first storm. The focus was basically health through to wellness. I felt like Willets was really well represented, although we couldn't get out to walk around the hospital and we couldn't walk to the hospital garden. We still got really good presentations from Margie and Ananda, a bunch of our local doctors. And throughout the end of the day, we were here at the college, which was a really wonderful facility to have a meeting in. And we were talking about wellness in our organization. So, I was trying to figure out strategies that we could do at the city to be healthier, such as walking meetings. This is gonna be my, if it's a, if it's a meeting with, between two people, doing it over a walk instead of lunch or something. Anyway, it was, it was really nice to host people because the Leadership Mendocino class is from all over Mendocino County. So, I think everyone was really impressed despite the fact that we couldn't really walk outside very much.
Can I just ask, I just wanted to thank Mayor Burdis for stepping in for me. I was scheduled to provide some welcoming comments that morning and-
He did a great job.
I used up the time.
That was good.
Adrian was a pitch.
The, I, under my Good and Welfare, I'm using my pitch for Rotary's 3rd, 4th, or 5th, or 10th, or whatever. I don't know. Bluegrass concert will be on February 27th, which is actually a Friday night. Actually, you'll have your choice of two bluegrass shows and Willets on the same night. Quite an unusual occurrence, somewhat unfortunate in a way, but there's another great show gonna go on at The Grange. My show is gonna be at the Willets Cultural Arts Center. And it's Friday night, 7 o'clock. Not my show, actually. A group that I'm bringing in from, Rotary's bringing in from, you know, traveling tour groups. So, anyway, I've got tickets. And I'm doing tables with refreshments or individual tickets, so not gonna-
Adrian has something else.
I just had to, wanted to add something to Good and Welfare.
Sure.
Just wanted to congratulate Ms. Mendocino.
Oh, who won?
2015 Cheyenne DeMarco.
Really?
And all three finalists were Willets girls.
Oh, really?
Really, nice.
Wow.
So, it was a sweep. Emily Oberg-
Good stock up here.
Yeah. Emily Oberg was first runner-up and then Michaela Terrell was second runner-up. Good job to all of them. And then, just under kind of general welfare, it has sounded and felt like a Petri dish tonight.
It has. Health and wellness. Everyone's coughing and-
I wish everybody good health and take lots of vitamin C.
I'm sure the fact that Cheyenne had lunch with, with us at Rotary had nothing to do with her being chosen.
So, we have closed session this evening. Three items, existing litigation of Port Trails, conference on real property negotiation regarding the Willets Justice Center, which we kind of own and kind of don't. And legal counsel, existing litigation, State of California versus Remco Hydraulics. If the council takes any action on any of these items, it will be reported out into this room immediately after closed session. I'd somewhat be surprised if there is any, but you're welcome to stick around if you care, care to. Thank you. And we shall recess to closed session.